And Father, I am thankful for the privilege to pray. You can do so privately, and you know I do, but it is good as well to pray publicly. I thank you that the city has recognized that value. And I wanted to be valuable, Lord, that you would give your wisdom and grace tonight for these items to be discussed, and for the good of the people of our city. Thank you for the authority you have invested in the people in this room, and that they take that seriously. Help them do it well tonight, throughout their term. We thank you for our town that is quiet and peaceable. We thank you for the place to live here. In Jesus' name I ask.
Amen. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I'll put my kids to bed.
Thanks for driving bus, too. That's kind of a challenge, I bet.
Enjoy it.
Yeah. We'll call the meeting to order and begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Devin, would you take roll call for it, please?
Randy Coffey.
Here.
Matt Cullen.
Here.
Mindy Gell, here.
Larry Lambert.
Here.
Bob Porter.
Here.
Steve Wallace.
Here.
Air Sweatt.
Here.
Paul is accounted for.
And approval of the agenda, if that looks good, everybody?
I move the agenda to be adopted and printed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the agenda is printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Reading and approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I move that we suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the September 2nd, 2021 regular meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Steve, seconded by Randy. Was that right? To waive the rules and approve the minutes from the previous meeting. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Do we have any pre-approved reports or presentations for tonight? I don't see anybody else here. I don't know of anything else that's under that category, anyway. And same, I think, for public comment. Anyone here for public comment?
A few in the back. Way back.
What about communications? Devin, do you have any communications? Empty communications for Devin. Well, I do have just a few little reports, just three things I want to bring to your attention. First of all, in regard to the charter amendment by initiative petition that has been placed now on the ballot for November. Our attorney, Justin English, did send that to the state of Michigan Attorney General's office for review to make sure the language is suitable for that. Because it was submitted a little on the late side, we didn't get the approval until after it was already at Corona, but it has been. The language was approved. I did talk to him a little bit, though, about what happens if it does pass or if it doesn't pass, and he's given some fairly clear instruction. Devin has also read up on what has to happen internally here, either way. But just so you know, we've got some clear guidance, irregardless of which way the vote goes. The second thing is that I've asked Larry Lambert to attend with me. We've been invited to have representation at the Shawasi County Commissioners Finance Committee meeting next Wednesday. It's at four in the afternoon. I think for the sake of transparency, they want people there while the discussion is taking place for the use of the COVID money. Connected to that somewhat, I also asked Larry if he would join me in a meeting that happened yesterday with the township and with SEDP, because we now have been told there is grant money available again for that 80-20 grant we had asked about for that water extension project, but they ran out of money last year. Well, they have money now again, same thing, 80-20. We're about $450,000 short.
$750,000.
I'm sorry, $750,000 short. With our commitment of funds on hand of 127, the township has committed, well, last time 300, but if they do get their COVID relief money, they're gonna end that in, but we'll still be short. So, again, connected to that finance committee meeting, the township will also be going to that meeting, and we're going with the intent of asking for money to go toward that project. Hopefully enough to make up the difference, if not totally, mostly. Perhaps they'll even match, or... I mean, it sounds to me like there's plenty of money there, but I understand the concern about giving one area a whole bunch and somebody else not very much, you know, that type of thing, so I guess they'll do discussion.
The only difference is, for could add Sue, when it went forward last time, there wasn't money to fund it. The MEDC, if I get the acronym correct, had committed enough funds along with what the city and the township had put together to make the 20%. MEDC, according to Justin Horvath, is MIA or has not decided on what they're gonna have funds available for, so rather than wait, we're gonna go with the actions Sue just described.
There may be money there.
There may be money there, we just don't know right now.
So those are the three things I just wanted to kind of update you on. Do we have other committee reports that anyone would like to give?
I'll go through a couple of items. One's not a committee, it's the planning commission. I just thought I'd let everybody know that this past Monday's planning commission, the site plan was approved for the Big B facility out on Lansing Road for a drive-through facility that will be between Taco Bell and the Lodge Inn. There'll be an 800-square-foot building, drive-through only, so it's a matter of when they are ready to start moving forward. So we gave that an approval after a lot of engineering review and things that happened before it came to the commission. As far as the business and technology committee, I tried to keep up to date on what's going on with the website, with the input from Devin, Dory, Sue, and today Mindy. We're close to having, and this is an eye test, but basically we've got the front homepage somewhat cleaned up, simplified, with more click-on-a-button, it'll take you someplace, and minimize the dropdowns, so hopefully the last iteration of that will go forward to Shoemaker Group here in the next three, four days, so that they can proceed. We have, at our request, they've provided a rough timetable for the incremental steps, and without getting into a lot of detail, right now, if we can stay on track, we'll be beta-testing a new site in the late October, early November timeframe, and hopefully we'll be able to launch. I'm gonna be realistic and say maybe by Thanksgiving, if we don't get into too many oopses or delays along the way. So that's a rough timeframe as to where we're at with that. Any questions? And the other thing with the ordinance and finance activity, haven't actually met, but we're gonna be talking in a few minutes about the code enforcement officer, which is kind of pivotal to what our committee's next steps are around that. Comments, questions? Thank you.
Any other committee reports? I did want to let you know, Bob, and all of you, but I've asked Dory to put a little line item on the utility bill when it goes out over the next two months, asking for donations to the parks program, and then asking for donations to the McQueen House building maintenance, not the historical society, they're separate, but the McQueen House building itself.
Oh, sure. The Mayor, Oswald Strauss, saw I asked Dory to have a standard piece of paper for anybody that wanted to do that. It's a donation that you can put towards your taxes to the deal, and so there'll be a document that the person can receive if they would donate for that. And so Dory made a mock-up today, so I believe we've had the mayor proof it, and I believe we have one available if somebody else made a donation.
If that's all the committee reports, then we can move on to presentation and approval of the bills.
Move that we approve the bills as presented in the payment. We authorize it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills and authorize payment. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now we're into the old business section with a discussion regarding the American Rescue Plan Act funds. As Joanne went through just a little bit last week, we have received our approval letter indicating that we'll be getting $218,967. That money should be received in the next two to three weeks. This letter says within a month of the date of the letter, which was September 3rd, and I asked Megan to check today, but it wasn't there yet, so still waiting on the funds. The letter does then go on to indicate that we should be prepared to submit the first project and expenditure report by October 31st. So not a whole lot of time, but if indeed we decide to use the money toward the water tower, John has most of that put together, the information that we'll need to report on, anyway, because the project is one that has been in the works and is required for us to do by ECO. So there's a lot of other information available online. I did send some of it out, so we can discuss that, whatever you'd like to discuss. I was just saying a few minutes ago, this is all the information about how to report and what the allowed uses are for the money. I talked to Megan a little today about the reporting, and she and Joe had checked to see if there was a template yet available that they could be looking at to see what they were gonna need to plug into that, and they were told that the template was not available yet. So I don't know. But like I said, we've got most of that information, it's just a matter of plugging it in. You do it all online and submit it. It goes into the U.S. Treasury. And then we have to report yearly. We do have very specific things that we can use it for, water and sewer infrastructure is one. My feeling is that if we earmark all of the money, the entire amount, for that project, we still are short. The project is about $350,000. We're getting $218,967. So we're still gonna have to have additional money. If we take out a loan, because we're gonna get the money in two separate deposits, 50% each time, if we use that money as our down payment on our loan, take out a loan for the rest, then when we get the second deposit, we can just put that against the loan to reduce, you know, the amount. I did find in here today, when I was rereading it for the 900th time, once you submit what you're gonna use this for, you can't change it.
Is the 218 our total, that we're gonna get half of that now, Sue, or do we get 218 and something else later?
We get 218 now. Well, definitely, or excuse me, not now, we get half of 218 in the next couple of weeks. We may get more than that by the next time, because if there are some municipalities that do not take their money, then it gets put back into the pot and redistributed. So it's possible that we could get more in our second check.
So we're more like 110 or thereabouts this time?
This time, yeah.
There's also maybe money, federal money, in the infrastructure bill, once it's finally gone through everything, for those kinds of things. I know I haven't read it, of course, but I've heard all those things, saying that infrastructure, water, sewer, part of that core infrastructure bill that's being debated.
The unknown of it is just...
Well, yeah, I could just have a cup of coffee, so...
I personally think that given that we've gotta do the water tower, and given that that water tower, in my book, fits inside the agreed-to uses for the funds, I think we should seriously look at using this first 110 or whatever it is as a good down payment toward the water tower, personally.
So are you all in agreement with the plan of applying for the loan for the difference?
Valuen?
Yes, but then, once we get our second check, putting it right against that?
Sure.
I think that's a good idea, but I do hedge a little bit, because I think the second tower and the extension is equally as important, even though this has to be done. That's equally as important, because anybody who lives on that end of the line suffers.
Yes.
I'm one of them. The water over there, Steve, is affected, too, so...
Yeah, well, as long as you brought that up, let's just touch on that. When we were meeting yesterday, we were talking about what the benefit is to the city for this joint project, and that's exactly part of it, is that second water tower provides more pressure, but it also relieves the concern about losing water out of that water tower, major fire, catastrophe, earthquake, whatever, you know. We've got a backup, which we don't have now. Also, in the money for that joint project is money to develop our second well site, so that we have a second well site to back up the additional use and keep that water tower full. So that's all in there, too, plus running the lines out into the township, through their industrial park, down Bennett Drive and backup.
Right, which will help them develop, but also help us with revenue for the water. Another thing for all residents, it'll keep the, if it's a loop.
Yes.
It'll keep that water circulating instead of sitting there and having sediment and stuff that affects the lines over time.
Bullet? Are we forcing them? You just said revenues, and that was one of the things that's been put on the table every time this comes up, of the water extension, is that although we appreciate the township as funding money to get it going, everything that the township wants it currently is for water suppression, meaning for, just for fire hazard, which means that water tower is sitting there with water with nothing doing. I mean, John's gonna have to dump that occasionally just to make sure that's not stagnant water. So I know it's been on the table in discussion, and I just wanna make sure it's still being discussed, that there are some, you know, primary, we need them, people as a revenue that want to get hooked up on that line.
I don't mean to interrupt you, Bob, I just want to correct something that you just said. Water suppression means that they've hooked into the water system.
But they're only using it for fire.
Only for fire. I understand what Devin's saying, but...
But the water lines have to be run to their building. They have to be a customer. They do have to hook up in order to have that available, because the water suppression is for a water system inside their building, so that they have a sprinkler system or a whatever system, so...
They were quite honest, and it looks that they still wouldn't be using our water.
Yes, it's all through the industrial water suppression.
I just don't want to be duped by them.
But if you have water suppression put to your building, you will have a, what do we call it, ready-to-serv or something like that?
Well, there's a fee they have to pay every month, there's a million use after.
That's where the fee comes in.
Correct. It's ready-to-serv or something like that, and then the dumping of the water tower, this is what I understand, I could be wrong, but having a separate water tower, you would shut one down and use another, so you always are rotating and moving that water around, so you're not relying on just one at all times. And as the increase of volume or usage becomes necessary, then you may have to use both them at the same time. That's my understanding, but I could be wrong.
No, I do understand it, but John was talking about how many get a special type of machine to make that water tower stay clean, but that's John not here, so I might go speak for John.
The other part of your comment was, are we forcing them to hook up? If they want the fire suppression, if they want a sprinkler system, then they'll need to hook up. We're not gonna force them to hook up if they're existing. I don't know what, how the township is approaching that, but if they're a new business, a new building, they will not get a permit from the county to put down a well if they're within 400 feet of city water.
And that's what I wanted to hear.
They'll be required.
Because that was something that was talked, and I wanted to make sure that was still a conversation. But they can just keep their well?
They can if they're existing, if they're already there and existing.
But yet everyone else has to hook up if they're...
If you don't have a well, you have to hook up in your new business. If you choose to hook up, you can, and then if you have to drill a new well, so your well goes out, you have to drill a new one, not just repair, you have to hook up if you're within so many feet. But I know when I was on planning commission, there was a company that wanted, and I don't know where it is, you know, because I've been on planning commission. If I remember it, they had a lot of water usage in their business plan, and it would have benefited them to have a city water system to hook up to. If I remember, there wasn't one available where they wanted to develop, and that's all I remember of that, and where it is, I don't know.
And Mindy, we currently have that in the city, not everybody has the water, so it's the same concept.
That's what I'm feeling like. It should be the same rules.
I think that's what Sue just said, though, if you're new, if you're new breaking ground, you know, well there, you would be required to hook to city water.
So if it goes by my house, I don't have to hook up?
Nope.
Not till your well does.
Not till your well does.
Oh, I thought if it just went by...
No, no.
And that's kind of a proximity, that it was in so many feet.
You'd have the opportunity.
I have if you chose to, but you're not required to.
You're probably gonna get your best deal, that way.
Sometimes, Joe, I was just gonna say that, sometimes when they run new lines, they'll give you a break. Hey, if you hook up now, it's X. If you wait till your well dies, then it's Y, which might be substantially more. I don't know, but that's usually what happens, to entice people to hook up the system.
So would be the same rule for them?
Right.
As it is.
Usually they'll go through an area and save a lot of...
That's what they did when they put the new well site out, when people along Rupert Road back in the, I don't know, what, the 60s? They then had the option to hook into the water or not, but then if their well died, then they had to.
I guess I didn't realize it was an option. I just thought if the line went by you and you're within so many feet, then you had to do that. I didn't know that.
Thank you for answering that, like I said. I just wanted to make sure it's a new group, again, to an extent, so I just wanted to make sure those are on the table for us this future. Any consideration that they'll support any fixing of lines, or that's gonna be our responsibility?
Any fixing of lines?
So I believe it's Owasso Township and the city. The Owasso Township is actually obligated, once they're laid down, if they pay for the water to the city, but the lines, if they go bad, the township takes responsibility, so that that's not the city's likely repair cost in the future? And I was curious if that was...
That has not been discussed. I don't know, we'll have to ask John his thoughts on that. My thought would be, that's a loop, and do you want somebody else messing with your loop? I wouldn't, but I'm not John.
Also, we're drawing revenue from that line, from that main line, so it would most likely be the city's responsibility to repair that main line.
Well, the outside townships are not, there's a couple of them that are not doing it.
Correct, but if the township was receiving revenue on that, then I would say, correct, then I would say there needed to be a joint responsibility.
Township is not receiving the revenues, but they put in there just so that the city wouldn't have that burden of extended repairs. I don't know, I just wanted to make sure of that, because I know John was suggesting that he's the one that's brought up that, and I don't know if that's been considered.
So with Owasso Township and the city of Owasso, did the initial cost go to the city, or did the initial, was the initial cost, was it split? So there's another thing that you have to look at.
And we will be sharing that cost with the township, so I don't know, I guess we'll have to check into that. That's certainly a topic that needs to be addressed, but that, I've not, I haven't hear that discussion.
No, there was no discussion. We were back at the fundamental, and we...
Yeah, we're just trying to get the thing...
Get the funding together to get an application in for the grant before, they say we've got time, but...
If we put the grant in, do we have to have the matching funds saying, we have it now, okay, let's put the grant in?
We have to have confirmation, and as I understand it from the discussion, letters of commitment, basically, to show the 20% is available, whether it's through two sources or 10 sources, that we've got documentation, the 20% is...
And that 20% number is $750,000?
It's actually $733,933.
That's 20%?
No, that's the shortfall.
Well, what's, what is the total cost of the project, I guess is my first question?
About $6 million.
Yeah. Our previous commitment, when we submitted our application before, the city signed a letter of commitment for $127,500, saying that we did have that available, that we definitely would commit that amount. The township was 330,000.
330,000.
And the rest of that was made up by MEDC.
MEDC.
And MEDC has quite a few grants available, for different things.
We're still pursuing, or Justin Horvath and the SEDC is still pursuing that, and as Sue indicated, are trying to pursue, you know, funds from the county to see if we can identify that 700-plus-thousand-dollar shortfall that exists right now.
There was, the Michigan EDA is also considering contribution, but hasn't committed the SDVG. I mean, there's so many different...
Lesson after yesterday.
How about DDA?
Well, DDA will be throwing some money in there, and I think that's part of what the township's original $330,000, yes, we have that money available. It wasn't all from there, but I bet probably 120,000 or 50,000 of it was.
I'm totally supportive of it, I just wanted to make sure that the city gets the best deal, you know, I mean, and some of these subjects have been talked for years. deal, you know, and some of these subjects have been talked for years, so I'm just kinda bringing different subjects that have brought, um, if we wanna grow, we need that line, so I'm, I'm just trying to kind of put a conversation on the table for such a new group again.
As residents of the city move here from somewhere else, our water system is not the best.
But it's better than it used to be.
And that's what I've been told, but lots of people complain about the system that we have, so I think we need to really address that issue strongly.
Yes.
And nothing getting cheaper, it's all getting more expensive, so the longer we wait, it's like.
You know, somebody that can write a seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar check that won't, not speaking.
If I win the lottery, yeah, no problem.
What's in our water, is our, our water was just very hard in this area.
Yes, it is.
It's very hard.
The, the rust is just so much better, though, I, I remember, like nineteen seventy-two, when I filled up the bathtub, that was orange.
Yes.
Absolutely orange.
I get that after a heavy rain, my, my house turns orange with the water.
Does it?
Yeah, it takes a while for it.
Are you at a dead end?
I think it's from that end.
Yeah.
That's what John, John's theory is that it's because of the line.
You're doing the same thing.
He's farther down the line than me.
Yeah, it's not as bad, honestly, like Sue said, it's not as bad as it used to be, 'cause you fill the tub and you get it a quarter full, it's as orange as rainy shirt, I'm serious, it was bad.
If it goes by my house, I will be, I'll, I'll, I'll do it.
Well, even where we are, when we first built in the late nineties, it was, it was still bad in a new, new area, but, you know, once the treatment plan got put in place, it's markedly improved.
Markedly. If you look at your water, your water is crystal clear, you use no chemicals, it smells like pomegranate, it's bad clear.
See, mine's all, salt take rusty.
The timeframe for this is not as urgent as it was previously, before, when the other grant was available, we had like a month to get it all together and get it submitted, and even then, the money was gone before the stamp went on the envelope. This time, they've changed how that's gonna work, according to Justin, the, um, applications will be taken until March, uh, thirty, March twenty-first is the deadline, twenty twenty-two, you can submit it anytime, and they'll review it, so that if you are missing information, they'll let you know that, and then you can get that turned in, but they won't be making decisions until March twenty-first. Um, but even then, the awards will not be given out until September twentieth, so, I mean, this is a long-term thing.
Yes.
We do have the benefit of a big loan that will be paid off by the city, um, when is that, twenty twenty-seven, I think there's something, I mean, you know, so many.
Twenty twenty-five, one, um, of their water is gonna drop.
So, I mean, as we look to the future, certainly sooner for the benefit of, of the water, but I, I think it's just a good thing to keep planning on, I know it's been on the table all before and on the table for a long time, but, um, it feels like it's getting closer, yeah.
I still think it's in our best interest to, as quickly as we can get the information together and get it submitted, who knows what the rules change between now and Christmas, the.
Right, are they gonna go by postmarked days, these people get priority, or, you know, are they gonna assess?
Exactly, I mean, the key is.
How are they gonna scale you, when they're gonna give out, who they're gonna give money to?
Right, well, and going to the county, to the commissioners and asking them for funds, I don't, I don't know how soon we can get a letter of commitment from them, I, you know, we might be ready to go, but we'll just have to see, and I don't even know for sure that they'll be willing to give funds. We, when we sent our letter to them, we asked for other things, we asked for money to renovate and repair the library building, um, parks, um, a bike walking path, sidewalk improvements, um, needed due to aging existing sidewalks, um, oh, and painting, and doing the water tower, the additional money for that.
And all those things are important and necessary.
Yes, they are.
Just, I mean, of course, this is my first go around with any kind of city political stuff and getting involved, but we have all neglected our infrastructure, sidewalk streets, sewer and water, all that, it's just been, oh, it's, it works, so why bother, so.
If the county's money has the same restrictions as is in all of this description, then we'll be right back to only being able to use it for water sewer, and maybe the security system for our buildings, our infrastructure, that might be able to come under that, but I don't know until we ask, and I don't even know if they know, but we'll see.
I'm sure it's very similar, not the same.
Yeah, my guess would be it's the same.
I haven't had a chance to read what you, the excerpts you, I printed, I might just get a chance to read this week, so.
So, um.
I do agree with Larry that it is probably the best thing to do is to get, use that money as seed money in a sense, or to do the water tower, but I don't want to forget about this project.
Absolutely.
And seriously, consider pursuing and pursuing grants and ways to get that project started.
Devon, do you think we need a, a motion, a resolution of some type to designate the, um, American Rescue Plan money to the water tower?
I think, I say yes, I say a simple motion that council agrees to earmark, because it was already earmarked in the budget, there was, and the budget has been approved, that it's in that, is coming in as revenues for that purpose, but honestly, there's nothing, and so if one of you council would drop, or it would change in the meantime, for that, you would have something to support it as a group of what your intentions were.
I have a question, does it say in that information about the relief money, okay, they earmarked those two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, we're getting half, but is there a possibility that we might not ever get the other half? Is there a way for them to stop it or get out of it?
Well, let me read this paragraph to you, I, I don't think so, but I'll read it, the, the paragraph, "In the award letter titled Award Amount and Distribution, the current award amount for your non-entitlement unit," that's what we are, N E U, "is two hundred and eighteen thousand, nine sixty-seven, which is based on the population determined by the U.S. Treasury and the cap calculated from the N E U's top-line budget. The first tranche payment, equal to fifty percent of the total award amount, will be distributed within thirty days of this letter. The second tranche payment will be distributed approximately twelve months after the first payment. The final award amounts may be increased based upon funds returned by other N E U's. The funds returned may result in a small additional payment to each accepting N E U in late twenty twenty-one." There's no additional paragraph that says.
You're gonna get that, I'm trying to get that one.
That, that there's a possibility you won't get it.
The money is from the federal government to the state, and the state distributes it, correct?
That's correct, it goes through the Department of Treasury.
And we have a gubernatorial election coming up, certainly, you never know, I just, it's, I'm trying to think of, be devil's advocate here.
You read that again, it says will be.
Yes, it says will.
Will be.
It's will be, it's, it's, yeah, will be.
And it is from the Department of Treasury, not from the Office of Regent and Welling.
Not Office, not from the State of Michigan Treasury, but from the federal government Treasury.
No, the State of Michigan Department of Treasury, Lansing.
Cause I know, it is, it's from the land, it's from the State of Michigan Treasury.
Correct.
Cause it is distributed to the states, and then they, they beat it up.
That's right.
And you're right, it does say will be, but you know what?
Well, and I think with.
It's gonna be devil's advocate though, too.
Yeah, just think about it, just see if, you know, is there a possibility that, yeah, we're gonna commit to this, and we all support it, I think it's a good idea, we have to do the tower, mandatory, we have to, there's no way out of that.
That's right.
So then we commit, we're gonna get part of this money, we're gonna get a loan, expecting to then take a big chunk and pay off right away, and all of a sudden, you know, it's like buying a car tomorrow and then losing my job on Friday, you know?
But like you said, we have to do it, it's required by Eagle to do it, so even without any of this money, we'd be taken out alarm to do the water tower, at least we can start out at a hundred and ten thousand dollars less than it would have been.
That's not gonna change your decision, when we do, we gotta do it anyway.
And take out the loan for the rest, and then when we get the rest, we'll put it against the loan.
And that's a plus for our citizens.
Yes.
If we're aligned with what's happening.
And the presidential, this was happening, money was moving, COVID was going on, we were in between lots of politics, but whatever the government, either at federal or state, said, that's what was happening.
They moved it around, it went, got distributed.
The worst-case thing we ran into was, they were upfronting money, and then you had to prove it, and then, um, they had a cap on it, so we had to pay one a little bit back because there wasn't enough funding for it, um, but we didn't earmark it anywhere, we knew, they were upfront, they're like, we're gonna give you fifty percent what you asked, and we audit you, and this is how much money we have, and then if we overspend, well, then we're going to all of you, and you're, you're gonna pay back, so, and I think we only paid like seven thousand, so it still was, you know, real dark close, but they've been to their word of what they're saying, whatever administration this has been happening.
I'm not worried, I just wanted to, you know, it's just something, that's why I think, yeah, well, right off the rocker today, so.
I've, I've been pretty comfortable with what they were, they're doing, if they see the money's there, oh, they gave us ten thousand, and told us, prove why you should keep it. I'm like, you gotta be crazy, but that's what they did. Money showed up, and Joanne's like, what's this for, I'm like, I don't know, I didn't do that, and then we found out a week later, sorry, I'm listening.
Or, or, Joanne's looking into investigating, uh, private funding, right, a bank or something that specializes in municipality, if I remember right from last meeting, right?
Bank over Holland Way.
Somewhere over on the west side.
Wrong agreement, I think I cracked a motion.
Sure.
I moved that the American Rescue Funds Act funds that have been approved for the city of Perry, parentheses, two hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars, be used toward the city water tower refurbishment project.
Can I, can I ask you to redo that before we get a second in here, because Devon just told me that we can't, because it's not on the agenda, we can't use the dollar amount, so just leave the dollar amount.
Okay. I'm gonna reread it.
Yes.
I moved that the American Rescue Fund, Rescue Plan Act funds that have been approved for the city of Perry be used toward the city water tower refurbishment project.
Sorry. Motion by Larry, said by Randy, was it?
Nope.
Not by mine, okay. As read, all those in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, motion passes. So I think we can get started with, um, Joe and Megan and John, cause he'll be back for vacation next week, uh, getting the information together, and hopefully we'll have a template to use to know that we're covering all our bases to get started with that, so our report's in on time. Um, and Bob, you asked a question, Joe's checking on a loan over on the west side of the state somewhere, I haven't heard her say anything about that, so I will make a point of asking her.
I knew she said.
It was an angle bank.
Yeah, the, the last time she was here, I don't remember if it was last meeting or when, but there was a bank specialized in, or, uh, for municipalities at a reasonable rate of interest, so.
I do remember her saying that. So we will ask Joe. Moving on to new business, another discussion item, uh, to hire a grant writer. Would like to lead off with that discussion.
I will pick it off since I asked that we, yeah, bring it back up here for some discussion, and I recognize, I've been a few months back, we had some discussion in here about potentially having a part-time grant writer or some arrangement, simply to be able to go out and, and mine for grants that might be appropriate for, whether it's the city or any of our businesses, et cetera, and I think we got far enough to try to get someone come in and, I put out a little pitch, that kind of went by the wayside, and we had other things that began to take priority, so I just asked whether or not we should consider revisiting the whole idea of, of a grant writer. I know that Sue did a little bit of mining again, uh, with Google's help to, to come up with a little bit more information, uh, I did a little bit off of that, and I think I came up with one of the names, was it Scotch Schmidt from up by Lake was the first.
Close way over here, somewhere, yeah.
And then there was another name that I found that was over by Kalamazoo, when I just went and Googled, I came up with a lot of people that fill in the forms or write the grant, but I thought the number of people that actually were out understanding the grant process and, and finding opportunities were a little bit more limited, was my experience.
What research I did the last time that we brought this up and kind of fell by the wayside, was their fees are kind of based on their, um, success of getting grants, so the more success they've had, the higher their fees are, which makes sense, um, and that, the first guy Schmidt that was gonna, was supposed to come in, but then something happened, I don't know, he couldn't do it virtually, and he got, I can't remember, but.
Yeah, he had an emergency and called that afternoon and said that he, or emailed and said he would not be able to make it because of such a long drive time, could he do a Zoom, but we didn't think that would work out really well, 'cause we don't have a screen, it's hard to see, so I said to him, could you please just reschedule to come here?
And that was the last.
And that's the last I have heard from him.
Okay.
I guess there are other opportunities, but for me, the bigger base question is, is it something that we wanna pursue, you know, even on a three-month or six-month trial basis to see what success we might have on, you know, considering paying per hour, uh, 'cause everything that I read said, don't try to do it on a contingency basis, that they get a percentage of whatever they, you know, might be in this grant.
I read the same thing, it was a fee-based, what else I read, if you, basically you're hiring an editor, so think of it as not necessarily a grant writer, but an editor, so if you could, we've had some success of writing grants in-house, John, Devon, whoever's worked on that, so if you have someone that can look at that for a fee, a flat rate or an hourly rate, and say, oh, you need to use this phrase, or that phrase, or this shrink it down, or specific this or that, it might increase our chances to get a grant. That's my research that I understand.
The, the other piece, though, that I look at and question is to whether or not, if we had someone that knew all of the places to look for grants, that might uncover things that, you know, in our normal course of business, whether it's Devon, John, or anybody else, wouldn't even think or know to look, we've been successful in many cases with those that we've identified, but are there some unmined opportunities out there that?
I agree, I'm sure there is, though, but on that, what I was told by the one guy that was supposed to come in, or someone else, I believe, too, I talked to two or three people, um, that doing that's like a fee-based, so they'll try, you know, those, whatever it is, two hundred bucks, and I'll search for grants, um, they weren't as willing to do an hourly rate for looking for fees, grants, I mean. They weren't as willing to do an hourly rate for looking for fees, grants I mean. So, but I think we should at least pursue it and look into it because of the things we want to do as a city. Waters, extension, you know, sidewalks, things like parks, you know, parks want to, we have big ideas to do more things, but we have limited funds, so. All these things, we need, everything revolves around money. So the more money, especially when you get it for free, why not, let's try.
There's two different levels to where, look at, you just, I mean, like you just described, I mean, there's one that, like he says, an editor. We help them, we continue to do what we're doing and just go from there. Or do you want the guy to go out and go hunt for them? He's working for you. I'd be willing to pay him for it, yeah, and if he comes back with a huge grant, he gets a portion of it. He's out, like you said, in the trenches, knows all the places to look. It's like hiring a good mechanic, I mean, he knows what he's looking for in that car.
And the only thing I would say to that comment, Randy, is they were, everything that I read were cautious that they don't get a portion of the grant. They may get business to go look for another grant, but every article that I looked at said, don't enter into a, you know, percentage split with the grant writer, you know, whether it's a lump sum that you're paying to write the grant or per hour, but do that upfront and not on a contingency basis.
Part of this information that I found, just touching on what you guys are talking about, it says, remember a staff person comes with a salary plus benefits. When considering the costs, be sure you include all of that to make a fair comparison. Number two, never agree to pay a grant writer a percentage of a successful grant, which is what you just talked about. Then it says, you'll want to set up an hourly pay arrangement, a flat fee for writing a particular grant, or a retainer for a certain time. So if we paid a retainer for a three-month period, to see what grants they could come up with and write for, paying them an hourly rate for actual writing, a retainer covers the searching. If at the end of that three-month time, they haven't come up with anything, all they've gotten is the retainer. And we can search for somebody else. But it gives a lot of different, it says, grant writing fee structure is usually by the hour, by the day or by the proposal. So I mean, there's different ways to do it. But it also says, this particular paragraph, this writer looks for grants that match the goals of the organization or individuals they're writing that proposal for. You know, they might be working for other municipalities and using the same grant for all of them. So they might know about those because of that. But that takes a lot of time, just finding all this stuff took a lot of time. So how would you like to proceed? Do you want to put a work group together to address this, or what would you like to do?
I'll toss out a suggestion. I went to the, one of the sites that, or one of the pages that Sue passed on, the Grant Professionals Association.
Yeah.
And, or one like that, they had a spot that says you can register to be a professional grant writer, and by state, they listed those folks that were there, and that Scott Schmidt that we talked about was on there. There was another gentleman over in Kalamazoo that didn't have as much on his website, but kind of looked like that he was more of the miner along with the writer and not just the writer-editor. I'd be willing, council would like, to contact him and see whether or not we could arrange for him to come in and talk about his service. And then from there, we could decide whether or not we need to have a work group get together or assign it to one of the standing committees that we have. At least give us a flavor. It sounds like the other gentleman, for whatever reason, doesn't have enough interest to come down and speak with us. I don't know what the situation would be with this fellow, but we could certainly make a call and find out.
Yeah, I agree. This hire grant writers in Michigan that I sent to all of you, a lot of these people, I mean, it says that they're grant writers, but it also says that this first one, Krista, is a freelance writer for Gold Magazine Children's Book. So how much time does she really spend in granting?
So it's hard, it's hard to make a living as a writer, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I'd spend that.
I get resume writers, et cetera, but in my mind, we're looking for the miner, if you will.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to hear somebody say, yes, I got this municipality three grants in six months, you know, whoo. That's the kind of stuff.
Some of that money would trickle around, calling, say, Williamson, Mann, Brighton, so they'd say, do you guys have a grant writer? I mean, see what they do, just trickle, I mean, just hit a couple of big ones, you know? I'm guessing that, spend a lot of money. And go from there too, but yeah, it sounds like you're getting in, getting contacted with it.
I'm going to go ahead and contact, his name is James Hisson from Kalamazoo. I don't know him, I just got a name and a number off from the.
Is everybody in favor of having Larry just do that and make an arrangement?
Just start, yeah.
Yeah, start on a starting, kind of a starting point, and we can see where it may lead us, if it looks like something we can do.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
I mean, if he'll agree, I'll get with you, Devin, and see when we can put him on a, what his schedule might be, to come to one of our future meetings.
So with that, can I ask, do you want this to continue as a known action per se and keep a discussion? Or would it be a new title inviting that as a presentation and then this subject has been discussed? You know what I mean, Devin?
I think this subject has been discussed, we're going to have a presenter come in, and then we'll go from there as far as whether we need to put something else on the agenda or not.
Yeah, if we can get him, I'd say he's under the, you know, through approved reports of presentations section.
Right.
And I'll tell him he's got, you know, fifteen minutes or whatever to sell his services to us.
Sounds good. Okay, under new business then, let's move ahead to another discussion topic of creating a new position of code enforcement administrator.
I don't feel like I'm doing all the talking, but that's kind of an overview of the Finance and Ordinance Committee's activity with the work done on the enforcement, the zoning ordinance, and now as I mentioned, talking about moving into the codified ordinance enforcement. I didn't have time, or didn't get it together in time to get it in the handout packet for everybody, but along with what Devin provided, there are a couple of, a couple of pages that we might use for some talking discussion. One of those, and I happened to run across it when I was doing some searching, and there's a number of other ones that Devin ran across for us as well that we didn't take time to include, kind of the job description for Lansing Charter Township for a code enforcement officer that, without getting into all the words, seemed to kind of fit with what we might be looking for, or had been talking about a little bit the last meeting. And then the other page, I just drafted together and clearly labeled the draft, the city get a Perry code enforcement officer, and I'll just go through and read that. We can, a code enforcement officer would conduct onsite inspections throughout the city, determine compliance with the city zoning and codified ordinances, which is a little, I'll editorialize it a little bit. Some of the other locations get into building inspection, et cetera, which I think we've got Rob Keigho that does that currently for us. So I tried to narrow the scope, or suggest we narrow the scope to our ordinances. The code enforcement officer would investigate potential violations, follow established procedures for achieving abatement, compliance were warranted, maintain records, and perform other related duties. We already got the amendment made to our zoning ordinance that basically outlines how they would approach a zoning violation, and we're in the process of doing the same thing with the codified ordinances. The position, we are part-time position with compensation based on a per-hour rate. The hourly rate would be recommended by the personnel committee and approved by the council. And the position, this is where I just took a stab at, the position would be funded based on an average maximum of eight hours per week. I don't know if that's the right number or not, but to try to say, how would we look at what this person might cost us as a city in the course of a year? Kind of thought eight hours, some weeks might not be anything, others might be more than that. Comments, questions?
I thought we talked about, shoot, what's his name?
Leland.
Leland, thank you.
I didn't want, yeah, I didn't want to get into the who right now, Bob.
Right, well, I thought we talked about that he, you talked to him about it, he was willing to do it, not that, I'm not saying he may or may not be the best person to do it, or this is the best way to do it. I'm just, I thought that was a discussion when you brought up, when we approved the teeth in the ordinance. I thought you talked to or talked about Leland being open to doing it.
Right, he was, and correct me if anybody on the committee, he's clearly taking the posture that he owned the zoning ordinance portion of it, which is the part that we really had, that we've had approved now and is, you know, just waiting its thirty days for true implementation.
Right.
Then we branched into the codified ordinances, which is something Leland here before hadn't really been directly involved in, tangentially, yes. And so the discussion Sue had with him, would you be willing to expand your scope to include enforcement in the codified ordinance area as well? And he was, you know, favorably disposed, I'll say, to that.
Open to the idea.
Open to the idea, but we really hadn't defined the position, so I thought was, before we decide the who, we need to back up and now say, are we in agreement with the what? And then he may very well be the person that would become the code enforcement officer for both zoning as well as codified.
Right now, since we're talking about him, he is paid as the zoning administrator. So he's paid per site plan review. If he goes out and talks to somebody or gives them a letter himself saying that they're violating a zoning ordinance, that's not a site plan review. So he doesn't get paid for that. So, I mean, he's very familiar with what the ordinances are, and he is a gentle soul, even though he's willing to say what you're doing isn't right, you're violating the ordinance. He is a small-town guy, trying not to offend his neighbor, but still. But anyway, whoever does it needs to be very familiar with all of the ordinances and needs to be paid by the hour for administering what needs to be done.
My question would be, do we have enough violations within the city to pay his wages? Whether it be eight hours a week, whether it be forty hours a week, is there enough violations that we would collect?
That are ignored. I see, I see quite a few, I see quite a few, only because of my experience on planning commissioning and knowing, well, that's not right, that's not right. And, you know, it's not said, and I agree with what Sue said about Leland, he's a wonderful person, but he's not the enforcement.
Yeah, Mike, Indy, or Sue certainly chime in, because we had a lot of discussion in the Finance and Ordinance Committee about not wanting to turn into a militant.
Murderant.
City.
Well, yeah, you can go the other way too.
So we took a drive around the city and just said, where do we think that we ought to be focusing if we do something like this? Where should the focus be? Not that every I and T is dotted and crossed for every ordinance, but what do we want to potentially embark on to just improve the overall appearance of the city as regards some of the codified violations, along with some of the zoning ordinance violations? If we want to get to the point that we say everything has got to be by the book, probably not. But we need to, there are some soft spots, and it doesn't say we're going to pay him eight hours, it's just, it may mean to the point that he has one concern a month. Be ideal if we got to that point.
And if you got him to do it, ultimately, if he becomes a position taker, it could almost help, you could write it in there of him doing the zoning and this. When he does take something off to somebody instead of doing a site plan, he can get paid for that, also kind of lump that all in.
That's right. He'd be, if he took it, he'd be paid as two different entities.
I think the aim too is kind of getting rid of the worst of the worst, the things that aren't fair to your neighbors that you leave your house like this.
And like Kyle said, you got one, you got one person, he's the guy, you know? It's not, you send you one, I really back in.
Sue sending you one, it's. I think Leland's good with that, he doesn't want to be the guy out going house to house, but just the worst of the worst types.
You know who you're going to talk to if you do something wrong, huh?
Yeah, I don't think we need to be the police state.
No.
But I think, I think there's a, there's, we're, you can go both ways. You can go full militant and you can go, I don't see that. And we don't, I don't think that, I think right now we're doing a little bit of, I don't see it.
It's kind of where, I think, because like.
And when I drive by, turn my head.
It's more complaint-based right now.
Right. Completely.
Yes.
And those complaints sometimes get, I don't want to say ignored, but maybe not.
It's not so much that they're ignored, it's just that there's no provision for enforcing the ordinance, there's not.
Correct, without taking them directly to court.
Right, without involving the attorney and taking.
So, trying to fix that bridge.
And a lot of them might clean up a little bit.
Want to say, hell, they're being watched a little bit?
Little triangles lie and they're right back at it again. Well, so, they are active, but they never get full compliance.
That if we did do this, if we, if we do pursue this, that a lot of this is going to be educating our residents that we now have somebody who's going to be administering the codes, that you need to be aware of what they are. I drafted a little, a little letter just to get it in my mind, but obviously we, you know, make sure that this says everything it needs to say, but if you don't mind, this is along the line of what I would suggest if we pursue this. And this is months down the road, obviously, but if we do do it, a letter would go out explaining why. Respect for our neighbors and each other's property helps keep the city of Perry a safe and prosperous place for residents and businesses. City ordinances define how that should be done, and through those guidelines, the city code enforcement officers can provide understanding of the ordinances and respond to complaints, initiate enforcement when violations are observed. Once enforcement action is initiated, the officer will attempt to make person-to-person contact with the property owner, and that may not be the best way to do that. Mike, our police officer, whose last name escapes me, but he said he didn't think person-to-person was a good way. Leland has said he likes that, you know, to talk to them, but Mike thought maybe that should just be a letter. So send an official letter, violation, but failure to have the property brought into compliance, and this is where it changes, will result in further action including. action, including tickets, fines or fees, and court appearances. So there's two types of ordinances, zoning and codified. So telling them that, telling them they can go to the website and look and see the extensive list of what those codified ordinances are. What the codified ordinances deal with though, primarily blight violations, junk litter, debris, inoperable vehicles, parking, tall grass fences in disrepair or houses in disrepair. They also address health and safety issues. So a list of common codified ordinance violations would be enclosed also with the letter, so people know what those common things are. And they could please become familiar with this, correct any violations your property may have, and then tell them when the new code enforcement officer would begin. You know, so there's just a kind of a, for your information kind of
Launch point.
Yeah.
I think, I think I brought this up before, and it's kind of related, it's not necessarily the same thing, but for new residents?
Yes.
Yeah, we should come up with some sort of welcome packet, because, I mean, I have like four new neighbors right by me?
Yeah.
And they don't know our, what we do with our brush or our, you know, bags, things we bag or trash pickup and that kind of stuff, so if we just give them, and I'm not saying send them the, you know, codified ordinance, here, welcome to the neighborhood, but if they just had some information, those things.
Information sheet.
Yes. That would ha, and then give them a website and that kind of things, that would help, I think, a lot. I just don't think people know. Some people move from the country to the city, like I did, and now, of course, I've been around the block a little bit, so I understood some of this stuff. But there's people who just either don't care or don't know, one of the
When they do come in to the city to set up their water bill or their utility bill, there, there are information, things that are given to them. Right, isn't that right, Devon?
And even if they don't come in and pay their deposit online, the girls, they talk for five to 10 minutes and give them a whole speech.
But I'm not saying you don't, because that, my wife did it, so I don't know if Jennifer forgot the speech or not, but I'm just saying if someone has something in their, you know, like
If they physically come in, they get a pamphlet, but I'm letting you know, you have the option now to pay your $75 online. So no, they don't physically get one, so they get speech.
Well, maybe, because we know, I know we get, the city gets informed when some of the houses get transferred ownership, in the new owner's name and address and all that stuff. So if we just sent them that information, not relying on them, or hopefully they come in to ask questions, because a lot of people don't want, don't want to ask, they don't want to be bothered, whatever, so, as much as we can. I don't, I don't know the solution, I'm not
We either do all new residents and, and send each one of them, or we keep it the way they are, because again
I would say all new residents.
You have to do it fair, because now you're asking me to pick and choose a
No, I don't even mean to, I think everybody should get a mailing that has this, this and this.
If you're new residents, you should get a welcome pack.
Right. Has, has the calendar of when we pick up brush and leaves and all that stuff.
That's not a problem, but I always want to remind you that every time you want to do something individual, I'm going to say that same speech again, is that you don't go to one, you do it the same way to everybody, and that's fine. So that's all I'm saying, I'm just repeating that same thing whenever we talk about something like that.
And I know that people forget that stuff too. So honestly, it might not be a bad idea just to do a mass mailing once a year and remind people how stuff works.
Oh, we do get the one, no, we have the calendar? Last year we got it, I don't know if we got it this year though.
The calendar is being sent out every year for the trash, the yard, I'm sorry, the yard waste, and how that is being handled, but Bob's saying even his stepfather, right? You're, you're saying
Yes, because not everybody, not everybody follows that calendar. If we gave it to them and they're, you know, whatever, the
No parking on roads out here.
Yeah, all those things, and, and I'm serious, people just don't know that. Do you know that your property doesn't necessarily go to the sidewalk? You know, I have a new neighbor across the street, she made landscape, it looks very nice, but she put up her landscape rocks right up against the city sidewalk, that's not appropriate. So it's those kinds, not that you'd get that in a pamphlet, but that's one example of something that people just don't know.
And we put stuff that you guys have addressed in our newsletters that, and they still don't, because we always remind them of, of walking your dog and what they do and what you're supposed to do with it. We remind them of the sidewalks and what they're supposed to do after precipitation. We remind them of our parking and all that. And we can do this to be advocate, that's no problem. But I have to say, we, we do make an effort to communicate to the community.
Oh, we're not saying you don't. Yeah, I'm not saying you don't, I'm just saying, how many, what do we have, about 2,000 residents, something like that?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're parents to 2,000 some people.
Yep.
Exactly.
They're like 900 or 800 houses.
So, is something quick like that, is that something that can be accomplished, printing it on like a water bill? So maybe end of summer, you put for, you know, for leaf collection information and put our website on there, towards the end of summer, so, well, that's what I'm saying.
I don't, I don't know, I mean, we could probably say, for information, go to our website, and we could put that, and we might be able to fit that, but
I'm just trying to think of a way to keep it short, but I mean, maybe it comes out in August, you know, for leaf collection information, visit either city website or whatever's shorter. But that'd be something that they're going to look at, because it's a bill. If they get something that shows up and it's a newsletter, they know, city newsletter, there's going to be a bunch of people that do that.
But some of them are, uh, maghras, two of them are not going to get it.
You're not even going to get it.
So, I, I kind of like the idea, okay, so, let's go back to everybody gets a mailing, we're already doing yard waste. We feel, unless we know John, that it's still too new, and that every year that should go out, because people forget, please give them the opportunity. We already have a, a tri-fold that you're speaking of, with all this information in it, and just, it'll just automatically, so once a year, everyone would get that tri-fold and the yard waste.
And a Christmas card.
There you go.
Not in, not in April, we do this in April.
A Easter card, okay. No, we can't do that, have to be welcome spring, okay.
I think we've got a couple of other opportunities though, that are going to be a cure-all, but we talked earlier about, we're trying to simplify the website, and I know there are a lot of residents that aren't technically going to use the website, so we put the bulletin board on Carlos that we're maintaining. I suspect we're probably going to want to put out a, once we get the new website up and going, I think we're going to want to put some sort of a mass mailing out.
Sure.
Make people aware of that, maybe some people that aren't currently using it would at least take a look and may use it, and maybe if we do that mass mailing, then we want to include some other things that we talked about, so it's not just a, a notice, a flyer, but
I'm sorry, still grabbing everybody else.
No, I think it was, I think it's good if something is manageable, we already have something that is going out. So it can be done on, on, you know, a manual basis, going in or a letter anyways, just add the tri-fold.
I love how little things comes out, that goes around the roots, stays up there, it's good, you forget, and I don't want to go look at that, huh? What day is the, you know, the, we pick up stuff for, you know, all the junk, kind of, or yard waste.
Recycling and all that stuff.
Took a left turn from the code enforcement officer, trying to bring us back to whether or not we want to, you know, because really I'd like to be able to come away from here with some direction that we can take back to the Finance and Ordinance Committee that says we're going to pursue a part-time code enforcement officer, yes or no? If we are, then we'll make some modifications to the ordinance that we're working on right now, and I'd ask the Personnel Committee then, if that's the appropriate place for it to go, to look at, you know, a job description that we could put together, as well as what an appropriate pay structure might be, and bring it back in here for some actual, you know, approval.
Steve, I don't think you were here, we talked about this before, just so you know, the hourly amount that I found when I was looking at this stuff online was $19 an hour. That kind of addresses what you were asking. You know, if somebody's going to be doing this on an average of four hours a week for $19 an hour, and if they are an administrator, because we, Devon keeps, Devon keeps saying, will they be an employee or will they be an administrator? If they're an administrator, then they're not paid sick time, vacation time, blah, 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 blah. So it would be a straight hourly pay for a few hours, and, and truly, maybe the first week it would be eight, maybe the second week it would be eight, but I think by the second month it would be two, or, you know, maybe two-four, two-four, you know, that kind of thing. And then, honestly, I think it would fall right now, but we'd have to see.
Does, does it have to go out for open bid, I guess you want to say, of, of, for job?
I don't think it does.
Can you, can you just go to him and say, he's the guy, that would kind of like, oh, that's
I guess the Personnel Committee would have to make that determination.
Can you, can you make that appointment or whatever, so, yeah?
I would say go ahead and
I think we need to pursue it.
Go ahead and
Pursue it.
Pursue it, okay, that's what I really want, trying to get out of this discussion.
Yes.
I'm getting this plan of the ordinance committee together, and we'll look, we'll come back in next time.
Something new tweaking on these ordinances, and they need work, and I've heard enough grumbling around the town in just that I've been here, that it needs some looking into.
It takes something away from the police officers too, because like, that would be somebody, this, this person would be, oh, that, that doesn't shovel their sidewalks. Right now, you know, you call the police and say, hey, can you, Kyle, whoever, can you go stop by there and tell them to shovel their sidewalks? That, you know, that's not a good time, waste the, use our time.
I think that we've kind of dovetailed in the committee, not really bringing here quite yet, but we will be very soon now, is the idea, there will still be a few things that we expect the police force to enforce, because of the timing, if you will, they're out and about the city all the time. There are some other things that the code enforcement officer would be in charge of that have here before been the, the police.
Right.
There'll still be a split, but as much as we could, we direct to the code enforcement officer position.
If it's like a vehicle violation or something, definitely the cops should stop by and handle that side of it.
But it's my understanding, and the nice thing about it is the code enforcer is going to cite it, witness it, and do the paperwork. And if they don't follow and fix it, then our police officers are going to do their job. Is that my understanding, which I think is very unique and nice?
That's fundamentally, we'll plan to follow exactly what we shared in here before and went through as it regarded the zoning ordinance, what we're looking at is very similar wording, that there'd be, if we elect to pursue the verbal activity, then a written notice, and then a, a actual fine, and if they ignore the fine, then obviously court activity.
I loved your burger, John, the last one you guys just did, that was like perfect, you got it all stuffed right up.
I think that was based off that international code enforcement or something like that, there's a, there's quite a few municipalities that follow it, I know we don't, something like that.
Awasso does that, I pulled it up and looked at it and had quite a discussion with Kyle about it, and it goes probably further than we want to go right now, because it also deals with a lot of stuff that Rob Keighol does currently from a building inspector perspective.
And I wouldn't, speaking of, I wouldn't necessarily not think of Rob needing help, because we are growing, and another set of eyes should see things that he may miss or just hasn't seen, you know?
Right.
So, i.e. the trees that, the dandelies that never got planted, that never will be planted.
Okay, thank you. We'll be getting to the Finance and Ordinance Committee soon to, what, get a meeting scheduled? Will the Personnel Committee agree to look at the pay structure and a job description if we provide some?
Yeah, I think, would the ordinance committee come up with the job description based on your next meeting and then just hand it off to the Personnel Committee for that review and then they can come up with?
And the last that they get a hold is the village or the lowthirt that's paying $10 an hour.
Oh, somebody's grandson maybe, huh?
Maybe.
So, I don't know.
Maybe they'll grow again.
Probably not the right number, but I guess, or it's very dated, not
Yeah, that might be too, but, yeah, that'd be a deal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is mayor's appointment. This is something that Joe Valting, oh, I'm sorry, it's not either, I'm jumping ahead, back up, back up, back up. Discussion again, to change council meetings to monthly meetings, that's our next discussion. Randy, you want to head that one off?
It was just a suggestion that we came up with, or Sue and I talked about, oh, a month ago, we were having some short meetings, but before then, I don't know how you guys have done it in the summertime, so I've talked with, about it with a couple other people that serve at other councils, and they, sometimes they just do it in the summertime, you know, they wean them back in the summertime, people are busy, so you just do the summer month. So it was just a discussion that we came up with, I know when I first started here, we had some pretty lengthy meetings, we had some stuff going on, took care of some stuff now, and it was an idea I threw out there. I guess, I'd still be able to question, you know, if we had an emergency, that we'd have to throw another one in there, fine, but over the last few months, I haven't seen us really needing to meet, the need to meet twice. I think we can get all that one meeting, but throwing it out there.
The concerns that I've heard from our department heads in the past, when this was discussed, was the concern of having one meeting a month, being able to pay the bills timely, and then the other one was that if the meeting then does run until 10 or 11 o'clock at night, then they've got to get up early to go to work, I mean, accounts people do too, but, so to make it more manageable, twice a month was what was arrived at and has been done for some time. Steve, what do you think about that? You've got some experience there.
And I honestly, I agree with you, Randy, in the summertime, we, we have shorter meetings, but in November, when we have a meeting that runs in, you're being generous, saying 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
When we have a meeting that runs until midnight, that's going to be, that's going to be an issue, and that's my only concern, is that we would have meetings that would run until midnight.
When you were doing one, you mean, or in
No, we, as far as I remember, we've always done two a month.
Okay.
But we've had meetings that run six hours, so I would just caution about that now.
I've not experienced that, yeah, so
Yeah. If you get that far, we're getting to it.
Throw a meeting in there anyway.
Yeah, we have, we have gotten to 10 o'clock.
Yeah, in my experience, we had to limit public comment to three minutes.
Yes.
Wow. In order to still get out of there in six hours, so, although I would love to see one meeting a month, I really don't believe, in my personal opinion, that it would work. Maybe, it may be in the summer, and then you could call it an emergency meeting.
Right.
So we could maybe do a two-month or a three-month where that's one meeting a month.
Yeah, if you did it from like Memorial Day to Labor Day, what is that, three months?
My biggest concern is what Sue already brought up, the bills, because you have to have councils sign off on them and approve them, and if you don't have a meeting, then you can't do that, it's only going to be once a month. And then, the only way that I would ever support that is that you put a, a limit on that, you can't go more than three hours, period. Business got done in three hours, it's all that we're made of, because I'm not going to sit here until midnight, you know what I'm saying?
Once a month, I'd rather just meet twice a week, twice a month, yeah.
Sometimes we have some real heavy reading.
Yes.
And there's been a few times, it's been for like three meetings in a row, we have this meeting, and I, I'm not that bright, I would get lost in it. I can only think I'm so much at a time.
I don't think we've had a time yet with this council, we haven't been able to have a quorum meeting twice a month. I know in the past there were some, some issues et cetera, but, yeah, if in fact somebody's going to be on vacation in the summertime, those things are another part of, of life, or a, a conflict, I think as long as we can, if we get into a point that we've given, I mean, we're passable this year, if we get into a point next summer, or as we anticipate that we If we get into a point next summer or as we anticipate that we're in trouble getting a quorum to hold a meaningful meeting, then maybe we need to, because we've got to go through it correctly if I'm wrong. Then we actually have to go back and change the, the charter to be able to go to one meeting a month.
I, I noticed you stated that, so out of curiosity, I did go check and all it says is that you have to have at least one meeting a month.
Okay. But we just set policy for two, but it's not even the.
Yep, our, our dilemma is a lot about our bills. And my experience is, um, the protection of the mayor to have two meetings. Um, I've watched mayors get attacked about bills and having a lack of a quorum and the, their intentions and how they're doing it. I got this thick of it and I'm not bringing that all out. If you want to see it, I'll show it to you, but I told her you have a great council right now, but I, I've, I've seen mayors get attacked over wanting that power control and not wanting those bills to go out. And their utilities, there's stuff that go out all the time. And there was quite, um, it was not nice, so. If, if there would ever be a consideration, there's, you know, um, council meetings have been canceled due a lack of agenda items um, in the, the council prior in my experience. And then there was a motion to authorize the mayor to approve, what's the word I want to use here? Usual business bills, that's not the word I want, but we know what you mean.
Operating expenses, that sort of thing.
Mm-hmm. And I guess if you ever did consider, like even what you're saying, Randy, is, is I would want something to support the mayor to be able to, to make City Hall run with regular bills. Meaning that there's a contractor we approve, we know that bill comes in once a month or, or all that kind of stuff from the city attorney that a council would be approving to support it. And so that's my biggest thing about being a little cautious going to one meeting.
What length of time is necessary to inform the public that we're having a meeting? Say we decided.
A special meeting?
Not a special meeting, but let's say we decided at the first meeting that either we wanted to have quorum for the second or there just weren't enough agenda items. And then something were to come up, would we have to call a special meeting and give a notice? Or, let's see, we even had to meet the last week of the month or something. Would that just fall under special meeting at that point?
Um, if you canceled due a lack of quorum for a regular and then something came up, then you could have it any day. It wouldn't have to hit that, yeah, you could just, twenty-four hours called special.
It's a twenty-four hour notice?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you go by the Open Meetings Act though, it's eighteen, we are stricter and we empty it twenty-four.
Uh-huh.
So you're almost saying like you could have your first meeting.
I was, I was just curious.
Do we need a second meeting this month, guys?
Yeah.
Like if that was an option for the summer, let's say, when people are going to be out of town or we don't have anything really pressing.
And this happened, Fourth of July is very typical, the lack of a quorum or, or, you know, lack of agenda items. Cause council, they don't want to be working on something that's a holiday and so, so it will be canceled.
So if that happened, that would be an option, then we could, we could do that and then?
It, yes.
Okay.
And council's just supportive, but I guess if, if we're going to do that, I would, um, and it's going to be regular, I would like something, the right wording from our city attorney that supports the mayor to make sure that our government is paying their bills on time.
And is there something, this is just a question, say, we have all the signatures here, does it have to be, um, presented that we approve the bills verbally?
Okay, three people here signed bills and, and someone said they were going to show up and didn't. I had three signatures and that's all it was.
But I'm saying if, if you have four signatures, is it done? Does this have to happen or do you just need four signatures?
Does there have to be a motion?
Does there have to be a motion?
There has to be a public, yeah.
And that's what she's saying, if at the, say, the first meeting of the month.
Right.
We recognize that there aren't any, um, crucial items on the agenda for a second meeting, that they can wait until the first meeting in the next month.
But I still want to get those.
If we have a, a motion that we know we can refer to with the language from the attorney where that motion could be made under any other business. Authorizing me to pay those.
Bills.
Standard business bills or however he comes up with that language.
Mind you, when that, when that happens, you're still going to sign those bills. You'll have two permits.
Sure, right.
So we're still not circumventing you getting that information and, and still approving them.
Not trying to do that, I was just.
I was just like, no.
Wondering if there was a way to, did that have to be done, yeah?
Yep, no, it's a public, surely.
But I, I think it's good we've had this discussion and know what can take place if we do decide.
It was a discussion that actually somebody brought up to me and they're like, why the heck you guys meet twice a month?
Yeah, and, and there are quite a few smaller villages and towns that don't meet twice, but, um, I think we can just keep it, um, in our mind, but maybe Devon could ask Justin to, uh, provide that language so we have it in case we do decide to not, maybe there's bad weather. What do you do when there's bad weather, like in the winter?
Why?
Ice and snow and stuff.
State of Virginia.
It's called, it's called.
John, bring, come pick up the fire.
In my experience, we never had that situation, so I can answer that.
All right.
I think we're all local enough. I mean, I've probably got the toughest lizard.
I will not be here.
Yeah.
You're, cause you're clear in snow.
Oh, right. But we have six council members, we only need four.
That was the point, that if we, if we can continue to commit to have quorum.
Right.
And I think we've done very well at that.
I think we have.
We haven't missed one yet because of the lack of quorum.
So one of the things I would suggest that is to get with, uh, Justin and be prepared. So if we have, let us say November, the second meeting in November, very, very light agenda, that we have that language prepared.
Yeah.
And we cancel that second meeting. And so that, I would just have that.
Okay, good. For routine bills to be paid.
Correct.
I've been trying to think of the words.
The real thing is operating for.
Definitely, there is, there is a word where, there is a something agenda that we just approve, pre-approve. So the mayor can do that. There is a word for it too, and I, I haven't tried to think of it.
I'm going to use routine at this point and Justin fixes.
Well, I just can plug that in.
He can plug it in for us, but like I said, you, I, I really don't have that, um, uneasy feeling here, but I've seen it. So that's what I told her, I said, I, I'm here to kind of protect the mayor on, on that situation is all that I'm doing.
Yeah, I, I think we should do that, just have it prepared so that, so if we do have a lot of agenda, it does save the taxpayer some working.
Yeah. I like that idea.
Just plug that in.
Yeah.
Okay. Now we can move to the next item, which is very, uh, brief, mayor's appointment. Um, there's one, um, uh, I don't know what to call this except say what the title of it is. The Title VI Non-Discrimination and Limited English Proficiency Plan Coordinator. That's the title. Has been Joanne Valting, but that position expires October first. So rather than wait until her retirement date, I would like to appoint Megan Galbraith, the new treasurer to that position, and she has agreed to that. Um, so if you're all in favor of that, I will appoint her, Megan Galbraith, to the Title VI Non-Discrimination and Limited English Proficiency Plan Coordinator position.
I move that we accept the mayor's appointment of Megan Galbraith as the Title VI Coordinator for a term expiring October two thousand twenty-three.
Same.
It's been moved by Steve and seconded by Mike to approve the mayor's appointment. All those in favor of that appointment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, motion passes. We do have a request that is on here somewhere. Any other business, I mean, okay, here, she's giving me this. Any other business that may come before council? Um, this is in regard to a request for a proposed street closing, which is actually an alley closing, for a turkey leg dinner at Amy's Diner. And you can read that, um, to see the dates and times. She's having kind of a celebration with a special turkey leg dinner, celebrating a year of being open as Amy's Diner, three years, I'm sorry, of being open as Amy's Diner. She's going to have overflow seating available at the, uh, fire hall. Um, but if we close, approve closing the alley that runs behind, then they can use that as well. Um, they're having chalk.
Chalk the walk.
For the kids.
That'll be up front, I believe.
Mm-hmm. So that's all I know. Do you want to add anything to that?
Oh, I don't.
Two hundred turkey legs, I understand.
And two hundred turkey legs they had here today, so, yeah.
I move that we approve the request from Amy's Diner for closing the alley on east side of Main Street, between Second Street and First Street from four P M. Friday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, until eight P M. on Friday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, for turkey leg dinner and community events, which will commence Friday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, at five P M. Second.
That was moved by Larry and seconded by Bob. That we approve this request for street closing. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by name, motion passes.
I'm sure you're going to get the bear kids from John, I guess.
I'm going to talk to Lottie afterwards.
Any other business to come before council?
Quick question, I probably could have asked Devon before that. The screen for the community center, the projector and screen, any word? That we also approved purchase of for meetings or?
Uh, well, the, the screen we already had was great.
Right.
The projector.
Yes.
Yes, we have, and we've used it for, um.
For the shoemaker group presentation.
Mm-hmm. Yep, and we have it in our rental agreement. So you can use it for just the building, you can't take it outside the building.
Correct, so the reason I was going there is if we had to have something via Zoom to counsel, is that a piece of equipment that we can use for that purpose? Can we hook a computer up to it?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
How do we hear them? If it's a screen and a projector?
Um, you know, we're a little different. You're going to hear them through the speaker, because it's all going to be through the computer. The only difference is, is that I'm going to project their face.
Okay.
On the screen. And the speaker from the laptop, they'll hear you also.
Amplify the speakers, you can plug into your computers.
Or two speakers.
Or plug in a speaker and it'll amplify it if you need to.
Okay, we did purchase two speakers to go with the projectors. We do have, we do have speakers on that. And we used it on Zoom for shoemakers, wasn't it?
Yeah, we didn't, no, we did Zoom, they were here.
They were here.
So we, we just used it as a projector.
As a projector that day, okay. So we haven't technically tested out the Zoom part.
So we could, if necessary.
The guy from Kalamazoo.
The guy from Kalamazoo, if he wanted to do his presentation that way.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess you could offer him that option.
I want to start by asking to come in person and if he's reluctant to do that, I'll use that as a backup. I still like to have the face-to-face interaction. If we were asking to come in February or something like that, I'd, yeah, I'd treat it differently.
It's a terrible drive from there here. Sixty-nine, we're not right now.
I know the back folks though, if he does want to drive.
Yeah, they've been on their golf, yeah.
Yeah, I know. Anything else?
I'd like to mention, um, Carol Sanford.
Yes.
Who we recently lost. She was a very dedicated member of the planning commission. And will be missed, and missed for sure. I do not know how many years she had. When I stopped, I had twenty-three years. She was there when I came and has been there since I left.
Yeah.
And so she's, she was always so steady and reliable and dedicated. And was right around Labor Day, you know?
I have, I have heard of it all. I'd have got the local paper, so I guess that's part of it.
I guess I haven't got to, uh, talk to the guys yet or anything like that, but I'd like to say a personal thank you to John and all the guys that came down. I was out of town, um, we had a issue at the house with our sewer, I guess you want to say. Um, and the guy was working, working and John and them just happened to be driving by and helped them out to. The guy even said, I've never seen a city come together like this unasked in my life. And fifteen, I talked to him, I know he was out for fifteen years. Um, and he said, I've never seen anything like this. And he says, they did a great job and he thanked them also too, but I want to put my little bit of things out there with John and the guys for, um, they were, they, they didn't know. I guess we were three foot away from him being in their, their stuff, but.
Yeah.
Darn it, but they got it.
Yeah, the DPW guys are great and we appreciate, appreciate Carol Sanford's service and all of the time that she was there. And, um, that leads me to say too, we do have a vacant seat now on the planning commission if anybody's interested. Um, we could have a council member, if someone's interested in doing that, um, or someone from the public. Just let me know. Anything else?
I have an observation, their statement or whatever, um, for residents. Please keep your dogs on a leash or in a fence. Um, I don't know what it is, but we have a terrible problem with especially little dogs going out playing ankles and things, so that's one thing that I remember for the new residents, it seems to be that a lot. They let them up the door and oh, and then they look at you, that you're walking your dog down the sidewalk, that is your fault. So, and I have large dogs that could eat that little dog for lunch.
Mm-hmm.
So, please, just, I know we don't have a leash law here, but I have only met a few dogs in my life that voice command, they actually listen. So just use a leash and, or a fence.
Good advice. Anyone else or any agenda items for our next meeting?
Obviously, we'll be talking more about the code enforcement officer, uh, proposal.
What, what new code are you guys looking into next?
We're focused right now on two inside the codified ordinances. Uh, one happens to be by number six seventy-eight, which deals with, uh, health and safety, which basically is an umbrella that covers making sure that the, uh, your grass has been cut, making sure your sidewalk's cleared in the winter time, uh, making certain that you, that trash is picked up. All of the nuisance kinds of things are, uh, included in that as well as burning. You can still have recreational burning, but not, so that's a fairly complete one in terms of addressing a number of complaints. The other one I think is six ninety-six, if I remember correctly, is junk vehicles. Those are the two right now in addition to also looking at verbiage for, uh, all of the, uh, other ordinances to try to mirror what we've got for the zoning ordinance. Right now, we have one paragraph that basically is very generic that talks about potential fines up to five hundred dollars, but it doesn't really get into any substance.
The only reason I ask is I, I heard a comment or know some people, um, and we were talking about it in ordinance and it is outdated, um, on a lot of different areas of now how people drive stuff on the road, um, different vehicles on the road, um, with razors, golf carts, whatever, motorcycles now. I mean, it's so, it has changed so much now, you can grab your dirt bike down the road now. But, uh, our ordinance is written in, we don't have that ordinance.
What we did as a starting point, Randy, is, uh, we asked Sue to compile a list of, since she's been in office, the complaints that she's most frequently received. the complaints that she's most frequently received, and we tried to match those up to what, what.
We don't, in the city with driving, we're driving down the road.
No, I saw that on social media, and I, I commented on it, found ordinance that may comply, and it actually wasn't, didn't apply to that, and then that person took that post off and never answered me. So they just like to take the big paddle and stir the, you know what?
Yeah, it's not saying we won't go on other websites.
I didn't know, yeah, no, we're, right, right.
That big problem, we didn't want to try to.
I didn't know if we had one on it as, as a city or what, uh, I don't know, I couldn't find it. It's not there.
So is there an ordinance regarding like off-road vehicle kind of things? We, we can look.
There is. I can't.
I would hope there would be.
There is, I can't quote exactly what it.
Yeah.
It's not what the, the post on social media was, I think the person sold these vehicles. I don't know, that's my gist of what I read they posted. And he was basically saying that, well, I can do it up north, but Perry, why can't we do it here? But there isn't an ordinance specifically says anything about that. So.
I thought that they did that a couple of years ago. ORVs, but I think we're talking about tractors right now.
No, it's, ORVs is a side-by-side, like an ATV. It's a sitting, and it's like a little car. You can actually get them road legal, you can license plate them and stuff, but you have to have certain things on it. So.
The county, the county allowed it.
We have an ORV's ordinance.
Yeah, I thought.
Is that what we're asking?
Now, where does like a golf cart? Cause I looked at my ordinance.
I have the off-road vehicle, yeah.
It's not, it's not under like traffic, you know, it's like under, um, general offenses or some, I don't know, but it's.
Yeah, it, it very, I don't know.
There is something, because Mike was.
Very descriptive in terms of.
There's just so much more anymore.
You can drive.
Everybody's got a golf cart.
Tells you what streets and we're following.
What streets of where you're supposed to be, like if you're, you have to be over to the right, you're not supposed to go down.
Yes, that, this.
And lane, that kind of stuff.
The inference of this was that we banned them completely.
Oh, no.
No.
So I can sit on my front porch and watch them any time of day, go by my house.
Now, golf carts are different.
ATVs.
Garden tractors, farm tractors.
Farm tractors, went around the block the other day.
Tractors and golf carts are different. That's why I asked, what are we asking?
Even skid loaders go around the road once in a while.
Because I don't believe golf carts are, are allowed. And I don't believe lawn mowers are allowed to be driven. They're, I think they're looked away because they're trying to get one destination to another, but I do not believe.
I'm just wondering if it falls under the slow moving vehicle sign, it's got to have on a golf cart or whatever.
I ride my rider from one side of the line to the other.
Don't quote me.
It was a year.
Four wagons.
It was, it was a big discussion.
Yeah, I do not remember. I think we need to look into it. Can we get an answer?
I was just wondering where it was at. I just wanted to know personally. I, the first, one of the persons I was talking to was, you know, they kind of read me what they found out. And I'm like, man, that's, that's old school. That's, that's way back there, you know? Where you couldn't even take anything like that on the road. Now, now you don't even have to be, I mean, back in our days of the old ordinances was you had to have blinkers, horn. Uh, even on a enduro motorcycle, road bike, um, you had to have that on there. Now you can just ride it right here.
Well, you did have a biker if you could use handsicles. You just had to have brake lights.
Yeah, brake lights and a headlight. They don't work.
Cause I know I got pulled over for.
Well, well, look at.
I was going to say, Finance and Ordinance Committee.
Is this becoming way more popular now, and I, I see something abroad coming? I think they can run on all their streets except on 52. I think so too.
It might have been something like that.
They, yeah, but we, we also.
We can ride our snowbills around.
We also authorized them, the only place they can do 52, you can have to get for the railroad tracks. So they had to legally have authorization because they can't cross railroad tracks anywhere else. I do recall that. And Mike was talking to me about an incident where that was the case, but the person then was not, then going over to the right-hand side. They were staying, they were in the middle lane, in the turning lane, just driving down the turning lane.
It does something.
And, and so he had to stop that person, and they got all upset, saying, I can drive this, and well, yeah, but, you know, so there was some discussion that happened. I don't think there was any ticket that resulted, but there was a discussion.
A discussion? I just see more and more of them out there these days, so it's, it kind of sparked my interest a little bit.
Well, we will look into that, the ordinance, Finance and Ordinance Committee will look into that and report back, so we'll put that on the agenda. Anything else for our next meeting agenda?
I will let Devon know if I'm successful in getting this gentleman to come to talk about grant writers.
Great. We'll put that down as I check with you.
Chapter 490.
490?
Yes.
Okay. That being said, it's 8:55 and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, Mike.